Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 8th zoning board hearing. A couple of quick housekeeping items. We need a motion and approval of the April 3rd minutes.
Motion.
Motion by John Mustriani. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Aldo's. All those in favor, opposed? Not as unanimous. And then we also have the second part of the, we have the minutes from April 10th. Again, this was Stone Ridge Street. You have anything else that night? Oh, T-Man Properties, and we also had Alpine Place and the Highway Department, which was a continuance, and the special permit also for this new Neocatia, which is also continued. I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by John. We have a second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed? Not as unanimous. Okay, can you pass these down to our illustrious Melissa, head of the board? Thank you. Okay. This is on the continued application of the Cataris Company 200 Summit Drive in Burlington for the comprehensive permit pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40B in relation to a 24-plus-or-minus-acre parcel of land off of Deer Street, known as Assessment Sheet 14, Lot 4. The petitioner proposes to develop and construct a 150-unit rental apartment development on the site with not less than 37 of the units to be restricted as affordable for low-to-moderate income persons pursuant to the applicable provisions of the state bylaw and the requirement for the financing agency. Project eligibility letter was issued Mass Housing Finance Agency in relation to the site on October 24th. I'll turn this over to Jerry Moody just to update us on the, on the decisions. I've reviewed them besides a couple of edits. I think we're in good shape. Two comments I'd like to make before Jerry takes it over, and they're relative to, and it will be relative to probably the next one. On page seven, Jerry, we've got number 18. We've got the, you know, as far as respect to the affordable units, we try to have the applicants provide a preference for occupancy for the veterans, residents of Milford.
That's really problematic. I've been having a lot of discussions with the agency that's in charge of this, and in fact, we were just talking today about it for that matter in relation to the other ones. And it's, it's difficult. This language that we have in here right now, probably, I have from my discussions with the agency a while ago, this might be acceptable, but it might not. So my suggestion is to go with what we have here. This is the way I had to restructure it to make it work. The other ones were not approved. So, and see if this works. If it doesn't work-
But is it a typo? Just says employees of the town there twice?
Employees of the town, employees in the town. Those are the two categories.
Oh, both, okay.
Yeah, it's a carryover from the prior ones.
That's fine. The only, the only thing that I'd like to add, and it would be for the balance of the 40Bs. The legal department and the building department, specifically the legal department, we need to have a contact person of the director of who's handling the affordable houses. Direct, the direct contact of the director of that facility that is doing it, and also the next in line, whether that be a supervisor, including cellphone numbers. We came into a couple of situations with this. It was a nightmare trying to get ahold of anybody. It became a problem for a few applicants. So I think if we have that information to be able to revert to it if we need to, it's, it'll be readily available.
You should probably get that. Again, with these projects you have under consideration now, you're probably two or three years away from construction in any of there.
Correct.
And then that's the point in time that you want to make sure that things are being done correctly. And each of these, and I'll ask John to correct me if I'm wrong in what I'm saying here, because I don't deal with that end of it much, but each of these entities has to contract with an agency. I can think of one called Chappa and some others-
Correct.
That really have to take care of that.
Right. And that's what I'm saying.
That's the point in time that the town may want to connect with that agency and work that out.
Right. But from the developer, from the developer or ownership standpoint, that should be provided to us as they go into construction and as they go to the rental site.
You should know what's going on.
Only because I've gotten numerous calls from people, veterans and 40B applicants, they get frustrated because all they get, they're getting someone in California, and no one's returning the call. And what they do is they provide a number, and they don't communicate unless it's by email. So there's no person, direct name or a supervisor name, that's handling the project.
Sure.
So I'd like to have that-
You can try to be involved at that point in time as we can be, but again, it's, it's the state agency sort of supervising it, not us, and their agreement, ultimately, the regulatory agreement with the state agency governs that, and the group that's assigned to handle it governs that. That doesn't mean we can't try to know what's going on, but it's not something that can be an accident.
They have to supply us what affordable units they're going to be utilizing on an annual basis as well.
Well, they have to give us the information.
As part of the decision, but, right, yeah.
Why can't we write something into the decision that says that that agency has to communicate with someone in the town hall and make someone in the town hall responsible?
We can't, we can't tell these state agencies what to do.
It's our government that works.
Jerry, we're not telling the state agency what to do. We're telling some firm that they hire in California who's outside of the state.
What we can do is with the developer and the owner at that point in time, which is never the original developer, it'll always be somebody else who buys it and operates it, we can deal with them to try to make sure that they keep you or us informed. We can't really govern the state agency. We can't govern the, the other agency that's hired, but we can deal with the developer when the time comes.
Is that something that we can throw in?
Yeah, but I don't-
What is it you'd want to put in?
How about, like, the, you know, there has to be a process with whoever the owner is before they get issued an occupancy permit. It has to be made public in the town hall someplace for all of these people, whatever, because the developer doesn't care. They just, the state agency, I mean, I think Dave's right about this, and with all these coming online, I hear what you're saying about a state agency, but we're not dealing with a state agency. We're dealing with some firm, private firm that's contracted out in California. That's not fair to the people of Milford.
Yeah, again, I don't know exactly how it works, but that's what they have to do under the statutes and under the regulations. They have to contract with one of these firms and agencies to operate that aspect of it. That's about as far as I know on it, and they do. And I, again, one that comes to mind is one called Chappa. I know you've gotten communication from them on that.
Israel, is that your-
Yes, everything that Jerry has-
Israel will know a lot more than me about it.
Attorney Moody has outlined is correct. The one thing that I was going to offer, which the town would have at its disposal, is most of these projects ours will, so I don't want to speak for others, but we'll have to submit an operation and maintenance plan to the Conservation Commission, so the town will have that. On that O&amp;M plan, you'll have the management company contacts for, you know, facilities for the project in case anything goes wrong from a facility standpoint. The town has someone that they can contact directly. That person or entity is the management company for the project, so that provides a direct line, you know, to the management company.
Why can't we just have in the decision that upon construction, the management company will share the 40B housing company that is handling the affordable units?
Well, you can put that into the decision. There's nothing wrong with that, but they have to do that anyway. They have to do that under the statute and the law and the regulations. And they do that. They do that.
I'd rather put something in that says that they have to register, that they, the developer or whoever owns it has to register with the town planner to make sure that, like, you know, the town planner has the specific information of who the firm is, whether it's Chappa or someone else, that someone in the town hall should be responsible, they should register with them, so we know people can get ahold of them.
But it wouldn't be the town pla- If you had anything in there, you might want a condition that said to the effect that the developer has to keep the town administrator informed of who the-
Okay.
Parties and the agencies are that are, that are handling it.
That'll work.
Yeah. So we can put that in.
That'll work. And then the only other thing that we brought it up before, it wasn't in the, in the almost final decision, which this is, would be, and I didn't see it unless I-
Go ahead.
Right, it would just be the CAD, need CAD copies of everything on the final permits, not just a set of plans, but CAD copies, so our building department will be able to have that information. So that would be relative to every one of them, which is not a big deal, because you're going to have it on CAD.
Yeah, we can provide that.
Jerry, the housing authority doesn't get involved with these affordable units at all?
Nope.
No. Different entity. Totally different entity.
Can I ask a question? This management company you're referring to, where would these, this management company contact be located?
It could be with whatever company is-
Like Dave said, it's going to be in California.
No, well, it's like a Chappa company, which is kind of in Boston, I think.
Correct. Those, those agencies are local, because they've got to run the local process.
Right.
All right, so we're not going to play with three-hour differentials.
Right, but as a matter of fact, I think this particular company out of Chappa, the person that was handling it was out of California.
That's not unusual in the state of age. I talk to Mumbai all the time.
So why don't you go ahead, Jerry, and just give us the overview, because the decision is here. I think this is ready to go. So I just, if there's anything that you need to add, I know I've reviewed them, the waivers are in place, and those were the three comments that I actually had.
Yeah, we got, everything is in place in here. There's some typos that have to be corrected, and then a couple entries based upon the action you state tonight that have to be made. So what, if you're inclined to grant it, which I gather you are, and I've prepared a motion that you can utilize to do that, do that tonight, you'll be authori-, you'll be granting the comprehensive permit and authorizing the chairman after it's finalized to sign it and get it filed with the town clerk and everywhere else that's got to get filed.
Okay.
In fact, I'll give you part of the motion.
I'll take it.
Melissa will have one for herself. Everybody can have one. Pretty straightforward.
Hey, you're going to write in about the town minister?
Yeah, we'll put that in.
That'll be in, yeah, that's a correction that we'll make before he signs.
So this is a motion for the conditional comprehensive permit, and I'm looking for a motion that the board moved to vote to approve the findings as presented to grant the comprehensive permit to the Cataris Company in relation to the application for the project of a 25.2-acre parcel of land off Deer Street upon the conditions as developed over the hearings and set forth in the draft decision, and further authorize the chair to finalize and sign the written decision and file as necessary with the town clerk and take any other necessary actions as required by law. Is there a motion? Motion by John.
I just want to ask you a question.
Yep.
As a, as a board, right, are we not allowing extensions? Like, if they come to us and, how long is the permit good for?
No, this is, this is good for-
We leave it three years. I've been thought about that a long time.
It's up to three years?
Yeah, it's up to three.
Okay, all right.
They have a right to apply for, and make an application for an extension, and you have to consider that, and then you decide whether or not to grant it or for what period, but that comes way down the road.
But isn't, isn't it after 12 months is when you get in trouble?
You know, not trouble. What happens if they, if this, when this is approved, this goes on our housing index when it's approved. What happens if the building permit isn't pulled within a year, then it may not be counted, but that's not likely to matter with all of these four that you have going right now. So that, where it was a factor in those other ones, it's not going to be a factor now, but that, that's what your concern is, that period, where nobody can, can pull a building permit within a year. It doesn't happen, yet if you don't pull a building permit a year, you don't get to count them on your housing index. That's not going to be a factor in this town anymore, because you're going to be way over very, very soon.
Is that a state rule?
That's, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
We can do about that.
Okay, okay.
So there's a motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, which by the way, there's four members on this board to vote, so that is, that is David Pine, Mark Casaloya, Robert Capazulo, and myself. So actually, the motion should come from Mark. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Dave. All those in favor of four, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Bobby, Mark, myself, and David. Thank you. You're good to go.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I got to get through the traffic jam.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, we have the town of Milford, so we've got two exclusions on this, so they would have to leave.
I can see his state government, is all he can say.
Just make them present, just so we can, yeah. Okay, this is on, this is on the continued application of the town of Milford Highway Department, 31 Front Street, for a variance release from the provisions of Section 2.42.5 zoning bylaw, in particular, these provisions related to the front yard setbacks. The variance release is sought in order to maintain and expand the existing salt sheds and storage area on a parcel of land owned by the town of Milford on the northwestly side intersection of Front Street and Central Street, consisting of 32,000 square feet more left piece of land. On this hearing, it's going to be John Mustriani, myself, John Mustriani, myself, we have Mark Casaloya, Robert Capazulo, and Chris Burns. So with that, I believe, so basically, this is the, for use for bulk storage area and general operations, the town of Milford Highway Department, they're currently going to remove the existing wood frame onted-style salt sheds and replace it with a 55-by-140 onted-style salt shed. According to the circumstances related to the conditions of the property and topography, it stated that the lot is long and thin and has street rights of way on three or four of its four sides, requiring to adhere to the front setbacks of these three out of the four sides. It's unique, and the topography, because it shares contours with the existing highway barn, which is providing easy access for loading of bulk items. The area has been used for bulk storage products and equipment for many years, compacting the soils and making the lot suitable for the specific use. The lot is unique in these characte, which, characteristics, which are not available to any other lots in the area, and the town of Milford would not have enough salt storage capacity located at the highway band, thus endangering the safety of the residents of the town of Milford in case of a harsh winter or supply chain issues with purchasing salt during the winter months. This did go in front of the planning board. By April 1st, they recommend that the planning board has a favorable recommendation that town planner read that the subject property variance is to allow for the construction of the new salt shed. The existing wood frame salt shed does not provide adequate coverage on the salt storage area. Specifically, the proposal is to construct a 55-by-140 canvas-covered Quonset hut-style salt shed over the existing vicinity of the existing 40-by-80 shed. Setbacks from Front Street on the east is proposed to be 7.15 and 25-feet front yard setback. Environmental regulations prohibit the open storage of salt in the WR1 aquifer areas, therefore, they made a favorable recommendation off to this board. An amended site plan approval from the planning would be required subsequent to the grant of a special permit. With that, I'll turn it over to our department, Highway Department, Ed Scott Christofouli. Scott, do you have anything to add? Are you the engineer?
Yes.
You're getting paid?
No.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want me to do it? Go ahead. John N. out with D&amp;L Design Group. Dave summed up the application. The existing salt shed is shown in the light blue. There's a sidewalk that goes around the existing wooden salt shed.
Wait, 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 the existing salt shed in the light blue?
Yeah, on the colored plan, if you look.
That's below, right?
Below the ground, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, I see it, okay.
See it? Yeah. And there's a sidewalk that goes around it, so the exist, the new salt shed is going to fit to the edge of that existing sidewalk. So there's already kind of a concrete slab there. The existing salt shed now has a 10.68 foot setback. Basically, the edge of the sidewalk is a 715, and that's where we would like to go out to. As part of the process, we would move in a section of the fence that runs down along Front Street that's all paved anyway, and we'll open that up, put a gate at the back here and a gate at the front here. Part of this process is removing this salt shed and this other older Quonset-style salt shed. So we're removing two, replacing one.
Okay.
That's about the gist of the project.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
So the Quonset-style hut gets up now that can move closer to Central Street. That's going to be gone.
Yeah, so the reason we move that is we have to store the salt we have in the shed now, so we can remove the shed. So we use that just to cover it for now, and then it's-
It's going to go back in there once it's built.
That'll be gone.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good.
Good. All right, I'm good, too. Any other comments or questions? Anybody want to be heard? If that, if not, we can close, we can close the hearing. And a motion by John to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
John, great job.
If only they were all like that.
John, so you still got to go back to planning board?
Yeah.
It's going to be the subject of final planning board.
This one's last.
Things quicker than I thought were going to be. Okay. On to the next one. Okay, this is, we're going to, I'm going to read them both, so we'll handle them both at the same time, make it a little bit easier and simpler. So this is on the continued application of Jay Lee Realty Corporation, 32 Hastings Street in Mendon, on the comprehensive permit to General Law's Chapter 40B in relation to 7.8-acre parcel of land for 310 Fortune Boulevard. A petition proposes to develop and construct a 52-unit rental apartment development on the site with not less than 13 of the units to be restricted as affordable. In addition to that, the project eligibility letter was issued at Mass Housing in relation to the site on October 24th, 2024. Also, as part of this hearing, the other one will be on the application of 21 Beaver Street in Milford. Ownership is East Main Street Properties, 32 Hastings Street in Mendon for the comprehensive permit of Chapter 40B in relation to a 14.464-acre more or less parcel of land known as 21 Beaver Street, which parcel is shown on Assessment Map 44, Lot 25A. The petition proposes to develop, construct a 103-unit rental apartment development on the site with not less than 26 of the units to be restricted as affordable for low-to-moderate income persons pursuant to the applicable provisions of the law and the requirements of the financing agency. This project eligibility letter was issued by Mass Housing in relation to the site on October 20, 24th as well. So with that, Jerry, have you got an update?
Oh, yeah, we gave you a bit of an update. Attorney Silvestre and I today spent some time going over the draft decisions, which you folks have, making some basic corrections and site improvements, which were not a big concern, is not, not difficult at all.
Any specific one, both of them, 21 Beaver and 310?
Well, we went over one of them, but they're very similar, so we're actually going to go over the other one tomorrow, the beginning of the week or whatever, and put that into more final form. But we're still awaiting two things. One is the sewer department. I've been in communication with John Meinetti, and they're working with the applicant to come up with what needs to be done in relation to the two sewer pumping, pump stations that are involved. They just got some data in this week, which the developer now has, and they're supposed to meet, I think, this coming week. So hopefully, this coming week, there can be a resolution of that, and there can be some agreement between them and satisfy the sewer department that we can then put into what may be the final condition in each one of these. There's that, and there's also the issue that was raised at the last one. I'm not sure where it goes, on the question of whether or not there'd be any waiver of permit fees or anything else. So those, I think, are the, really, the two outstanding issues, then putting this final decision together. You've already got another meeting scheduled for the 22nd, which I think we can have everything ready by the 22nd, which is good, because that happens to be the 179th day or the 180th you're allowed to act, so it happens to work out that way.
Yeah, I, I actually reviewed the draft decisions as we normally do. I think the same will apply concerning a full set of CAD copies along with high copies.
Sure, you can do that, yeah.
Same issue concerning the, the housing rental agency. I'd like to at least get into some of that. So we talked about, or it was brought up the last time, about the discount of fees.
We read the room, Mr. Chair. We're ready to concede that, so I don't think-
So we don't need to, we don't need to vote on it?
No.
That's good, because it'd be better off if we're like-
Easy.
Okay. So anybody else have any questions concerning it? Is there anything that you'd like to update us on? You're working through the sewer process, correct?
Yeah, no, we, we met with them on the 49th, and we had a good meeting, and then they gave us some information yesterday, so our sewer consultant, Weston Sampson, is looking at that now, and we're going to have a meeting with them next week, and like Mr. Moody said, with the sewer department again, hopefully, end of next week.
Yeah, so we've been going back and forth with the draft decisions, so I, I've got, you know, copies of the latest ones. There'll probably be some more modifications.
We'll give you another version with changes that we make, and again, we're going to have to add the sewer.
Hopefully, we'll be ready to go in the last meeting.
You should be ready to do what you did theoretically. Everything else goes well, you'll be able to do what you did tonight, take a vote, authorizing you to make, sign a final decision, but it'll be, I hope it'll be in a form-
Right, all of the plans will reflect all of the updates we've discussed over the last two or three meetings anyways, right?
Yep. And for what it's worth, we think we know who we're likely to use as a monitoring agent. It's a local company out of Welsley, it's Maloney Properties. They do a lot of this, so obviously, we-
Well, that's good news.
We're not at that point, but to the extent it's helpful for you to know, that's what we anticipate using.
Yeah, I, we, I got numerous calls with the frustration of people not returning phone calls, and "Don't call me, I'm out of California, here's my email." You know, it's one of those things. And they just, we're asking for some clarity, a few of them. Okay, so you're basically, we're just looking to continue this till the 22nd? Is that correct?
22nd, 6:30.
Okay, we have a motion. Any other, you all said otherwise?
I think we are.
Yeah, you just got to button up a couple of other things, correct?
Well, we're going to continue to work on the decision and all that. We'll get you the, as it develops, we'll get that to you.
Yeah, so the, I, I've got the couple of drafts. It's an ongoing draft, so I get it.
Now, I guess, just one question, Mr. Chair. I think the most recent plan set we have is March 18th. I don't think we anticipated updating the plan set again prior to approval. I think it has everything that we've agreed to do in it, to the extent there are any tweaks that need to happen post-approval as sort of the final plans pre-construction.
Yeah, you have just about everything on the last one.
I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
You had just about everything marked on the last one?
And that's what we talked today, that's what we identified, the plans of record, so.
Because I think-
And if I'm wrong on those, let me know, we can talk about that.
I think we need to update the date that Lynn put in, but that's easy.
That's fine, that's nothing, yeah.
All right, so you're pretty much there. Okay. So then I'll take a motion to continue until the 22nd, and at what time is that meeting?
6:30.
So, 6:30, you're going to have a problem with that, right? I got here at 6:00, right?
Okay. All right, with that, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by John to extend it until the 22nd, 6:30, to have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Bobby. All those in favor?[1704.63]
the end to deny it if, if you, if that's.
We have to go through the whole six months.
If we're over the, the 10%, still we're going to go forward with it. CEI's already been working on it. Frankly, they provided the money and CEI's been working on it. So you probably want to think about scheduling a hearing, maybe at your June meeting, you could put them on the agenda, start it then. Since it'll be well along and there'll be the 180 days, we'll start running then. So you can maybe even take the summer off and pick it up in the fall if that, uh, you know, but you probably ought to just schedule it for a meeting in June.
We have to go through the whole process, Jerry?
You have to go through a process. You've got to give them a full and fair hearing and make a decision, which again, I'm not encouraging it one way or the other, but you may say, this is a great project. Can we approve it? Or you may say, no, we have enough in town and you can deny it. But that will be up, you'll be able to do that.
Okay.
But you do have to go through the process. You can't just say, no, we're not going to hear you.
Well, why? We're, we're at the, we're over the time.
You've got to go through the process. You can't.
Put them on a stay.
Anybody, anytime? You've got to go through the process. Yes, yes. Anybody in these eyes? You've got to, you've got to give them a hearing and then you've got a right to deny it.
Only if the state approves it.
No, no. I'm saying that even though you're over the 10%, if somebody files an application, you have to go through a process and give them a hearing and give them a fair hearing and you can make, but then you can make a decision denying it if you see fit and that can't be overturned. Where these others up to now, you, you're going to get overturned. So everything changes, but you still have to give them a fair hearing, just like you do anybody who applies for anything.
And then can they go to the state?
No.
Have we denied them?
No, no. That's the key. That, that's gone.
No, when they, we, we triggered, Stone Ridge two triggered the, we're at 11 and a half percent. But they, they were in the queue.
They were in the queue. That's regrettable, but that's the way the statute, the regulations work.
Actually, they came in after that.
They came in before, the time of all these three applied, we were at 9.5%.
Right.
Then a month or two later, we were at 11.5%, but from the standpoint of the law and the regulations, they're at nine point, we're 9.5% for them. So you have to consider them as if they were none in town. But the next, but Altera or any others that come in.
The one that's coming up in June.
Then you can.
That came in after.
Give them a hearing, but you're able to deny it and they have no right to appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee.
Okay.
But what if no one pulls a permit at that time? Just like these came in.
We're already over.
No, no. The one we're going to hear in June.
Done.
We are, Stone Ridge two already pulled a permit.
Right.
That put us over 11 and a half percent.
Correct.
They submitted it after that.
Right. So you're over it already. You're not, you're not going to go backwards. You're not going to go backwards.
He brought up these others are done.
So these others may make you 13 or 14, or they may not. Doesn't matter. You're over it. You're going to be over the 11, at least until the next census. But when that next census comes, we'll be well over it most likely. So. Right.
Okay. All right. Let's go, I think this is, will be the last hearing we have.
Yep.
Do I have a sheet on this?
Yeah.
Hold on. Here it is.
David, can, can the board communicate to them our intentions when we open the meeting at the first thing or the, uh, to not, to despair to not wasting their time?
Uh, no, give me, give them a fair, you can begin to let them know, but give them a fair hearing. Give them a chance to make a presentation, whatever they want to do. Hear from anybody else. And of course, as always, there won't be anybody else. Uh, you don't have to let it stretch on forever. But you've got to give them a fair hearing. That means you listen to everything they want to present. It takes two or three meetings. It takes two or three meetings. At the end of it, if you want to say that, in the words of the statute, that, you know, we've met the limitation and grant these waivers that they're seeking would not be in the interests of the town, you'd be free to do that. But first you've got to give them a hearing. Again, you've got, you've got to give them a chance to convince you that it's a good project. I don't know anything about it, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, but you've got to give them a fair hearing.
Okay. They tried to, to rezone that piece of property about 10 years ago. Would you remember what that was?
I, I don't. But there were, yeah, I remember the rezoning effort, but there were still a couple of houses with people living in there and they were opposed. And as you know, town meeting typically if the, if one person's going to be hurt, the town meeting doesn't do it. I don't remember what it was, but there was.
Monja.
They wanted to Monja grow.
They wanted to rezone to commercial, I think. You put a shopping plaza there.
It could be, I don't, just don't remember the detail. But it got defeated because there were a couple of homeowners who now are disappearing. They're out there anymore. So.
Used to cut Christmas trees down.
Okay. Ready to go to the next hearing?
Yes, sir, sir. Yeah.
You sure?
I mean, we can keep talking if you want. I've got no place to go.
Oh, finally?
No.
Okay. This is on the rescheduled application of Nuno Catoyas, Catoya, sorry, 99 Congress Street, Milford for the special permit relief pursuant to section 3.13 zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located on the south, south easterly side of Parkhurst Street, shown as on Assessors Map 42 lot 85 and known and numbered as 26 Parkhurst. The special permit relief is sought in order to permit the proposed addition of the existing family structure on the property, which overall lot and building are non-conforming as to the lot area width and frontage. So with that, I will read the, um, the application really quick. So the, the applicant states that the house is in bad condition, non-livable. Um, the state use of the premises is a single family to be renovated. Um, extensive the proposed additions, the ceilings are very low and not livable conditions. Adding on a second floor will make it livable. Uh, he also indicated that the pursuant to what positions of the bylaw he's seeking a relief, that's 3.3. Addition and rebuild the existing height, um, eight feet four, eight feet five inches from the lot line. The proposal will be eight feet from the lot line as well. Special permit, so existing single family home is going to be built. The proposed use will not create undue traffic pedestrian safety. The applicant states will not change, will remain a single family home. And including to the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood. The applicant states it will change the size of the existing house. So with that, the planning board did hear this in March 18th. They made a favorable recommendation and the town planner indicates that the applicant requested special permit to allow for improvements to the existing sam, single family dwelling on the subject property. The lot is non-conforming as to area width and frontage and the house was built in the 1850s and is non-conforming as to side setbacks. Specifically, the proposal includes raising the ceiling height on the second floor as well as adding an eight by 10 addition to the southeast side of the house and a four foot by 10 inch, 10, a four foot by 10 inch addition to the southwest side of the house. I'm sorry, a four foot by 10 foot addition to the southwest side of the house. A small four foot front porch is also proposed. The house is to remain a single family dwelling. That's based, and they forwarded over a favorable recommendation, um, to the planning board. And the folder, I don't know, we have folders on this one or no?
No.
No? So just, you've got another plan like this?
Yeah.
Because there's only one here. Push that down there. You got another one there?
This is the. I only have the existing, um, the existing conditions.
What, you got a big rolled up plan there too?
Yeah.
Is that the one you probably submitted? That's the house.
So this is.
Why don't you pass that down to those people? That'll help.
That's good. No one has the, the, the records.
Basically, you're running a primary bedroom and two other bedrooms on the second floor. You have two full baths on the second floor of this?
Yeah. So the, so the, so one would be part of the prime street.
Oh, part master, one of the master. Okay.
And then, uh, and then another bathroom on the first floor.
Are you rebuilding the first floor to support the second floor?
Yes, because the first floor is, uh, they're like, the ceiling heights are like six, six feet eight.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, so it's not. So technically it has to be, I mean, structurally, the wall has to be, um, yeah, everything has to be.
That was 1840, I know.
So on the first floor, I'm seeing a full bath with a stall shower. And it looks to me like a direct entry from the den to the bath, to the bath.
Yeah.
And not from the hall. So that's not going to be a bedroom. You can't have a bedroom in there.
No, no.
Because that, that concerns, that concerns me. That concerns me.
Is this existing conditions? Is that what this is?
No, that's the proposed.
What's the existing post plan? It's not really matching.
What does the house look like?
Needs work.
No.
Is it?
I didn't give it all my.
This is the, uh, so if you want to take a look at this, gentlemen, you'll see the red areas of the proposed additions. The existing house is on there.
Yeah.
You can share that.
See the existing dwelling right in there?
Oh. I have one on this.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. Yes. My understanding is, has the town engineer reached out to you at all?
Uh, no.
Okay. We're understanding that there's an awful lot of water in the basement.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Like a river.
I mean, not, not quite a river, but yeah, there is, there's definitely a lot, a lot of water.
So I, it's got to be.
I mean, there's a, there's a brook nearby, maybe.
All right. So are you going to be trying to run a drain from the basement to the street drain in order to, because first thing, everybody's worried about more water because it's so close. So we've got to have a mechanism to correct that.
Yeah.
Is there a street drain out front?
Uh, yes. I don't know how far from the prop, but yeah. And then there's a brook like nearby.
It didn't show up, the brook didn't show up.
It's across the street, isn't it?
Yeah.
The brook's got to be by the, by the, um, walk the path. That's, it's, because when I worked for the Parks Department, I used to mow that and blow it. And the brook is directly across the street from him before the walking path.
Yeah.
And then the other side is.
So like sometimes it's totally dry and.
I don't understand why you have all these doors.
We just proposed that, ties the downspoke drains into the, into the road drain?
I can put, I can put a cold tact system.
Yeah. Just do, I mean, if you have a road drain, just tie the downspoke drains into the road drain.
Yeah, but it's groundwater in the basement coming up.
Because if the groundwater is lower than the road drain.
I don't think so. I didn't think they did.
The brook is right here. It follows that.
Yeah. You, you can't just, I wish we had the highways there still here, but I don't think, I think.
Does it cross park or so?
No.
Does it cross park or so?
I didn't think so. I could take the town.
It shouldn't be affecting the sound.
You're not supposed to.
But basically you want to put a condition in that the water table resolve, the no damage and no harm to anybody else.
Yeah. We don't want the neighbors getting additional water. That's the point.
He's got to, he's got to resolve that.
So here's what, um, here's what.
I like, I like the best way would probably just be through a perimeter drain on the outside and then pour your way inside and then just put a cold tact underneath the driveway. And that way it solves the problem of, uh, of the water.
All right. So let me kind of, let me give you my, my, and board members can weigh in. It's nice to see the improvement that's going to be done. I think if the board members are familiar with this property, it's, it's an eyesore. What I have a problem with is having a private on the first floor plan, you have a, a direct entry from a den, which I know is going to be a bedroom. And then there's no access to that bathroom from the, from the hall at all, or even from the kitchen without going through the den. Then you have a door coming into that entry hall, going into the kitchen before going upstairs. I think that's a problem because all I'm seeing at this point is trying to make a unit out of this that's never going to happen. So I think the plan's got to get modified a bit, in my opinion.
What, do you have the legal right to do an ADU with the plans? I really don't know. In other words.
No, it doesn't. Right now, he doesn't, he doesn't meet, doesn't meet front and rear side backs.
And you have to meet.
Yeah, in his own, he doesn't meet any of it.
Up here.
You have to meet all of that.
Yeah.
You know, especially when you have two baths on the second floor. I mean, I, I get it, the master bedroom, but, um, the first floor's got a giant living room and dining room. The dining room is way, way away from the kitchen. We've got a den in here with a private bathroom and shower. When you come in the front door to entry, there's also a door before you even get into this quote unquote unit.
That's not supposed to be there. I don't know why it's.
So.
There's an interesting layout, to say the least.
But there's no kitchen up here though.
Are you going to be living there?
No, he's a rental, probably. That's my problem.
No, it's still, it's for, for sale.
Go upstairs.
The house isn't big enough for him.
One right above the other.
The plumbing, see, he's got the, see where the plumbing is on the second floor versus the first floor? He could modify the entry and run the same plumbing against that wall on the first floor. You know what I mean, Dave?
Yeah. I mean, it's one of those things. It's, it looks like, it looks like a, like a top and bottom apartment where it stacks, the kitchens would, would stack. It'd be fairly easy to add a kitchen right above. You know, that middle bedroom, it stacks perfectly.
Yeah.
You know, you've got the door that goes into the unit. If I was going to design a two family, this is how I would design it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. This has got to get modified.
Who did the plans?
Uh, I'm from West Bridge Water.
Right.
So you want to continue it and give them a chance to get it modified?
Yeah, I, I.
Guys can't modify it.
We can't modify it, no. But I think given him the opportunity to modify it correctly for us, will make this board feel a lot better.
Sure.
So if you wanted, let me just show you this.
David, are you concerned is it going to be a kitchen upstairs? Is that what you're?
This kitchen lines up, see this kitchen on the first floor?
Yes.
Lines up per, perfectly with this middle bedroom. This bathroom, this bathroom on the second floor, all the baths are here. This here could have been right here on the first floor.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Yeah.
So you're concerned that there might be a possibility of turning that middle bedroom into a kitchen?
Because all the plumbing would be right below it. Well, not only that, if you take a look at the first floor plan, look at the entry. You've got a door going into the kitchen. And then when you go left into the den, the den's got a private bathroom with a shower.
Correct.
All that can be moved over. The bench doesn't need to, there doesn't need to be a, a private bathroom off the den. If this is supposed to be a, um, it's not a half bath, it's a full bath.
I'll make a motion to continue.
And the living room and dining room, you can certainly cut, forget the dining room. You've got a big eating kitchen.
Give it a second, Dave.
And then you can, you can have a living room and a bedroom. You can make up, the bottom floor can be two bedrooms.
It looks like a two fam. It looks, this is how you would design, design a two fam. You should just make some alterations and put the board at ease. I think we just suggest you make alterations and come back. And come back.
So.
I'll make a motion to deny it.
Well, if you deny it, you can't come back for two years.
I already made the motion to continue it.
Couldn't get a second there.
Well, no, you're still talking. All right. There's a motion to continue.
I would be with David to continue it as long as that's what the applicant wants to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, like.
All right. So.
I can just move, basically make the whole.
Make it not look like a two families coming.
Yeah. But I'm saying like the whole first floor could be wide open.
Do you live there or you, you rent it?
He did the beautiful job on Congress Street with, uh.
Uh, to live on the house now. That's a, that's for sale. That's not to, to live.
This is, this is too much like it's going to be a two family.
Yeah. Too easily converted, you're saying. Too easily converted to a two family.
So a motion to continue, uh, seconded by.